We adopt our building regulations as part of that code by reference. And if you don't feel comfortable with planning, reviewing the entire thing, it still basically says they review it even if you take out those words. So you need to probably simply not approve this ordinance. Because they're supposed to follow the law. If you leave out those words as you write it in municipal code. The municipal code says you are adopting all of those building rules and regs by reference as part of that code. So they're still under a duty to review those same documents whether you take out those words or you leave those words in. So if you're worried that they're stepping out of what they have the ability to do, then your proper thing would be not to pass this ordinance.
So what you're saying is that under the city code, they're under obligation to, for every application, they're under the obligation anyway to look over the application with the concern for the building and construction codes.
If you pass this ordinance, if we apply that, yes. Now, if you want to completely scrap that and give them a different guideline as to what they're supposed to review, then I would suggest you completely remove that whole portion of the paragraph, not just the part about the codes. And give them a direction of how they're supposed to review.
Oh, but then we'd be accused of micromanaging. The thing of it is, this ordinance gives the planning commission something that they don't currently have, and that's review of construction that's going on in this town. And we've needed that for a long time. And I concur that the words that are included in the city adopted building and/or construction codes is part of the city code. Those are made by reference, whether it be the fire code, the plumbing code, the electric code, whatever the case might be. And I don't think there's a single person on the planning commission, or has ever been on the planning commission, that if they didn't know what was being reviewed, that they wouldn't, whatever the right word might be, take the word of the building official or seek somebody else's opinion, is this in, you know, compliance with the code? I don't think we're asking the planning commission, and Ms. Blankenship can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're asking them with having this ordinance, the way it's worded now, to step outside their realm of expertise. We're asking them to review the construction in conjunction with the building official to ensure that, you know, that we've got an appropriate facility going up that this applies to. And right now, we don't have that. You could throw up something that doesn't meet anything other than the building official signing off on a building permit, and boom, that's it. There's no review of planning, zoning, whatever the case might be. This gives the planning commission, board of zoning adjustments, part of their, more meat to their commission. And those words, whether it's in there or not, is still enforceable.
Well, I disagree with Mr. Panal. The building code is enforceable, and we do have, the building official is required to review according to the state building code and all requirements in plumbing, electrical, structural. The building inspector, and so their buildings that are going up are being reviewed by him for those standards. What my concern is that this tells the planning commission to do that they're responsible for reviewing the building and/or construction codes, and they're not responsible for that. They are responsible for reviewing setbacks, codes regarding some of the other issues that go through here. And I'm not sure, you know, the city attorney may be absolutely right, but I still think that even admitting that sentence is not going to hurt this ordinance because it states in the beginning of our city ordinance what the requirements of the building official is, and that is for him to review the building codes. So there's no need for this to be in here also. They're still going in reviewing the application for the appropriateness under the Eureka Springs Municipal Code and the adopted guidelines of the planning commission, not taking any responsibilities away from the planning commission at all. And it's just saying that there isn't anybody on that planning commission, and even when I was on the planning commission, I wouldn't be qualified to look at from a structural standpoint or some electrical standpoints that the electrical code has. Might be eligible to look at some of the other issues, but this is strictly a building official instrument. But that's just my opinion.
What my colleague's saying, I think I grasp it. But on the other hand, I don't see that it would do any harm for the planning commission to, you know, have another eye on different projects and things. I don't think it would hurt for more than one set of eyes to be looking at things. And there may be things that the planning commission might catch that the building inspector might just inadvertently overlook. For instance, I know there are, there's a parking space in my neighborhood that has been built within the last probably six or eight months, maybe year. And it certainly doesn't come into code. There's definitely more than a two-foot drop-off, probably more like a five or six-foot drop-off on this parking space. And there's no rails. The parking space is barely big enough for a car to get into, let alone for a person to get out of that car when the, when that car is parked in that space. And so there may be sometimes when the building inspector just inadvertently misses something or, you know, we're all human, anybody can make a mistake. So I don't think it would hurt for the planning commission to, you know, be able to put their eyes on these things and be able to sign off and say, well gee, I noticed this little thing, maybe, maybe this person could bring this into compliance. And then it would be, instead of being just a good project, it'd be a spectacular and excellent project. So I don't think it would hurt for the planning commission to plan for this city's future and to have an active role in that. Thank you.
They wouldn't prevent what Ms. Balance was saying, wouldn't prevent the planning commission from doing that at all. In fact, that's what their responsibility would be. That has nothing to do with construction codes.
Pardon?
Has nothing to do with construction code.
Would you say that one more time, please?
Construction of a parking lot and the spaces does not have to do with the building codes. Excuse me. With the Southern Building Code.
I think we're to International Building Code.
International Building Code.
With possible concurrence of the planning chair and the city attorney, could we not say in that last sentence, "The commission shall review in," and I don't know what the right word would be, "in conjunction with" or "in tandem with" or whatever, "the building official shall review the application for appropriateness." That's all we're looking at, is appropriateness. We aren't necessarily saying that they're going to get in there and say, is the right wiring being done or whatever. And I think if we added "in tandem with" or whatever the right fluffy word would be, "with the building official," the application for appropriateness under the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, da-da-da-da-da, and any adopted guidelines of the Eureka Springs Planning Commission. And I think we need to add "and the HDC, Historic District Commission," because their guidelines are sometimes override city statute, seems like. Just something for the city attorney to consider before we vote on the stick at reading.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
It seems like under Section 1, Number 2, it takes it completely out of the hands of the building official. You know, it has to be approved by a majority vote of the planning commission. What if they don't have a quorum, you know? I mean, this could slow up things to a great degree. It just seems like this is not the right way to go there.
We've got in that same paragraph, if they don't act within 45 days, oh well, they didn't do their job, and it gets approved anyway. So I don't think that that really mucks up anything other than what we've had over the last few years with quorums and procedures anyway. Because we don't even have this control right now.
Anybody else?
I'm waiting to hear from the city attorney.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to ask me more directly because I don't understand the question if you.
Can't.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Can we, city attorney, can we change the verbiage, "the commission shall review in conjunction with" or whatever the proper legalese would be with the building official, and add the Historic District Commission at the end to make that more palatable?
That would not be the intent of the ordinance the way it's written. If you wish to do that, I suppose it could be done that way, but I would suggest a pretty much a rewrite of most of the ordinance to do that, not just a simple change of the verbiage there. Because really what you're doing with this ordinance is you're putting the planning commission in charge of when a permit gets issued or not.
I don't see anything wrong with that. We aren't trying to, you know, our neighbor's up the road, everything that you do has to be approved by the planning commission. So at least the planning commission isn't trying to take on single-family houses, apartments, whatever. They're at least trying to attack an area that there is lack of oversight on that's being addressed by this ordinance. And I don't have any trouble with the way it was originally written and approved on the first reading.
Anybody else?
The original motion was to read by title only for the second reading for approval.
It was to approve on the second reading.
Okay, approve on the second reading.
Mr. DeVito.
Motion to amend.
To amend the motion to strike that line.
Was that voted, was that voted?
Neither has been voted on.
Start discussion.
Okay. All right, so the original motion has been amended to read in its entirety.
Mr. Panal's motion was to approve on the second reading. And then later, Mr. DeVito moved to amend the motion to strike Section 2, Paragraph 1, last line.
Okay. Yeah, this is the motion. Everybody understand it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to amend.
Does he amend it? Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I would like to do.
Could you read the motion one more time?
To amend, Mr. DeVito made a motion to amend by striking, may I paraphrase?
Give it a shot.
Section 2, Paragraph 1, the last line, all city adopted building and/or construction codes and any adopted guidelines of the.
No.
No.
All city adopted building and/or construction codes, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. I want it to be right.
All right, that is the motion. Does everybody understand it? Does it need to be re-remed? Okay? Your real call.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Panal?
No.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
3-3.
I'm going to abstain from this. I can't vote for this.
3-3, motion fails. So we go back to.
We go back to the original motion?
To approve on the second reading.
In its entirety without any amendments. Okay. Do your call on it until, just so we stay on the.
That's fine.
We're back to the original motion.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Panal?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
4-2.
4-2.
Moves us on to number three, Weekly Dwelling Units List. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open. Yes, sir.
Postpone this to the next meeting based on information received only a few hours before the meeting to the next meeting. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrying, postpone to the next meeting. Number four is out, the Texas franchise has been taken off. Number five was taken off and put back on for the auditorium agreement 2013. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Panal.
For clarification, if it's so enlightening, we could find out based on Mr. DeVito's comment in regards to the agreement that's already been approved.
I got a note.
By whom?
No, go ahead, read it.
With the council's indulgence, I shall read this. This is a message from Mr. Ragsdale, the CAPC Commissioner, sent to me Monday, October the 22nd, 2012, at 21:00 PM, to Mr. Mike Maloney, Rick Brock, Ray Dalefield, Butch Berry, James, DeVito Auditorium Agreement. Mayor Pete, while reviewing the management agreement for the auditorium in preparation for the upcoming CAPC meeting, I noticed it has automatically renewed per the renewal clause. The agreement gives either party 90 days prior to the expiration to give notice to council, and/or a one-year renewal is automatic. That period has expired. Please pass on our thanks to the alderman and city for allowing us to continue to operate the auditorium in 2013. Sincerely, Mr. Charles Regdell, CAPC.
When, when was this first put on our agenda? Disagreement.
We need an exact date, not months ago isn't going to cut it.
Okay, I'd like to know that, please.
Good luck, yeah. Mr. Panal.
This is for the city attorney, Contract Law, Paragraph 4B. While this is a year-to-year agreement continued without notice between the parties, either party may terminate the agreement by giving a minimum of 90 days written notice of intent to terminate. Are those words such that it is automatically extended if there isn't either party asking for termination?
Having not been presented this beforehand and not knowing that this was going to be a question, I don't see any other qualifiers from a quick read of the rest of the document that would prevent that from being the case. But I would certainly want to look at, to see if there are any other qualifiers in the rest of the agreement.
Would not our request to put it on the agenda for discussion of that agreement show that we are trying to see what is being intended to be negotiated?
It would, it would not be notification, I don't believe. But I would like to look and see if there are any qualifiers that are in the agreement. As I said, a quick read of it here at the table, I do not see any. There may be.
I'd move to table this till the next meeting.
Second.
Need for a discussion on it? Mr. Panal.
I'd like for the third, and I mean, I don't want to put any undue burden on anybody, but when you look at whatever, in looking up whatever date this was first put on the agenda, I believe it was put on there to discuss the mayor negotiating with the CAPC the agreement for 2013. If I'm wrong, it's just another one of those that gets swept under the rug for lack of.
Point of order. Point of order. He's out of order.
Need further discussion? All in favor, postpone this to the next meeting. Pending review of the city attorney.
You will have an opinion on this. I will look at the documents, see if I see any qualifiers. But I do not see them right now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
5-1.
All right, that moves us on to number six ordinance for voting by ward. Motion to discuss.
I make a motion to discuss voting by ward.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open.
A question was brought up at the last meeting when we were discussing this about whether we were going to have to, if we voted by ward, whether we were going to have to have voting places in each ward. And I talked to Beth in Berryville at the county clerk's office, and she researched it and said that what we call voting wards are actually voting precincts. And that according to the way things are set up, the voting would remain just like it is now. We do not have to have voting places in each precinct. They can be all combined into one the way we do it right now. So I would like to make a motion that we assign a number to this ordinance and proceed with it.
Second. May I second it? Any further discussion on this? Mr. DeVito.
I will stand by my assessment that any change in the way people vote in this community should go to the people who cast their votes, and it should be up to the voting public at large to determine whether or not they want to vote by wards.
Ms. Balance.
And I would say that if all sorts of matters like this were left up to the voting public, that women still would not be voting, and blacks would still have to drink at separate fountains.
Barry?
Well, it seems like, you know, they're wanting to bring deer hunt up, back up to vote of the people after it's already been voted on by the people. So therefore, it would appear.
That has nothing to do with this discussion?
As to slavery and women's right to vote.
Point of order. Point of order.
So therefore.
Mr. DeVito was not recognized by the chair to make a comment.
Okay. Now, voting on Ms. Balance's point of order, that had no bearing on the case whatsoever, just like the other comments was. So about blacks and women, it has no bearing on this case at all. So, Mr. Berry, I think you're trying to make a point.
I think it's what I'm trying to do is make a point that this is an important, this is more important than anything else, and it should go before the vote of the people. I've had several people around the city who've said that they don't want this changed. And so I think it needs to go back. If it's going to be changed, it needs to be changed by the vote of the people, not by six people or four people. I should say four people probably, this table. And I think that's an important thing.
State your point of order.
That's inappropriate. He's speaking about other people. He's casting aspersions on other people. And according to Robert's Rules of Order, that is inappropriate.
Well, Mr. Balance, you did the same thing.
And I got called on point of order.
Yes, we did. Okay. Now, let's get back to business, ladies and gentlemen. Gee whiz, it's not that big an issue. All right, Mr. Panal, you had your hand up.
It's not when you're the chairman.
Comments across the table, not calling for it. Mr. Panal, you're calling, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
This little blue book that our representative from the municipal league kept referring to allows this table to make that change. And I think, I think there's been too many times that people have said, well, we need to take it to the vote of the people. Well, we do every two years. And this is just another way of taking it to the people, to every two years, being able to put somebody in their ward instead of voting for somebody else. And I think that this in itself, and if the only other alternative before this ordinance would be considered at the table, is considering a public hearing. Let the people, let the people speak. But at least we need to have the ordinance read on its, put on its first reading so that the people know what this table is considering, and then let themselves be heard at this table. That's why we have public comments, that's why we have city email addresses, that's why we have the press here. If they don't like it, then whenever it comes time, they can change it.
Mr. Panal, in effect, makes the case for taking it to the people.
If a public hearing is, in essence, a snapshot as to how the people feel about this issue, expand it even farther and just take it to the people to vote on it. I mean, we can all champion the cause from one aspect or the other, but a public hearing in essence is hearing from the people, but it's only hearing from the people who find out about the issue, have the time to attend the public hearing. Whereas a vote of the people expands that input from the people to the entire city of which this ordinance would affect. Now, granted, Mr. Panal is right that that little blue book there gives us a lot of authority in things like sewer issues and road issues and things like that. But voting for the elected representatives is a very important issue and should be backed up with the people.
Ms. Balance.
I'd like to take a moment to read from Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, 10th Edition, page 380, refraining from attacking a member's motives.
Point of order.
When a question is pending, a member can condemn the nature.
Point of order, sir. Or likely cause. Discussion on the floor.
Ms. Balance, you're out of order. Stop.
That we are discussing.
You called a point of order, you have to stop.
We are discussing a vote here. We are all well of Robert's Rules of Order. She's referring to Mr. Berry, all he said was a vote of four people. That could be any four people at this table.
Point of order, but he must avoid personalities and under no circumstances can he.
Mr. Mayor.
Question the motives of another member. Thank you.
Mr. DeVito, your point of order is not recognized, Ms. Balance. We're discussing another point of order.
It doesn't surprise me.
Mr. Panal, you got something to say, sir?
No, it doesn't surprise me that the out-of-orders go the way they go.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your input. Ms. Lindblad.
Well, I don't know the history on this, and I guess I can dig it up, but I would bet that this was decided in the beginning by six people at this table because it was set up a long time ago, the way that we vote now. And I really doubt that it was taken to the vote of the people. And the people always have the option of a referendum to put it on a ballot. And we have been voting by ward for a very long time, nominating by ward, voting citywide. There are a lot of times that people have not gotten elected, that the people in that ward voted for. And this is the reason that I would like to see us vote by ward because I think it would be better representation. And I agree with Mr. Panal, we could at least read this ordinance so that the public knows what the ordinance says because a lot of them do not have time to come down to City Hall and find out. And then have a public hearing and see what the public says on it. But I believe that this would be a much better way to represent the people in their wards. Otherwise, we might as well just elect citywide, nominate citywide because in essence, we're electing citywide, and in essence, we are nominating citywide since each ward does not get to elect their own representatives. The whole city represents their, or elects their representatives. It's just a way, in my opinion, to have better representation of the citizens within their ward.
Any further? Mr. Panal, he's got a motion on the floor.
This is a sidelight, and I don't have all the facts, but there was an ordinance number assigned to this back in 2004. There was a comment that says not read for reference 7-9 meeting. I think it's still an injustice that we don't present this to the people as. as the way we're seeing it. Having a public hearing allows that much more, at a cheaper cost. Now, in that case, we'd have to have a special election or wait until it goes on to the next regular election, which I don't know what that would be, but I, I think that something needs to be addressed, because there has been enough input, whether it be good or bad, that, you know, we're, we're trying to kill something, saying that people don't want it before it's even read, so how, how do, how do we know that, that this isn't going to happen, and what may be the weak points and strong points? Maybe it can be strengthened and take away some of the concerns that, that people may have during a public hearing. If this table is open to recommendations and making changes, but I, I still believe that this ordinance at least needs to be given consideration and put before the people via a public hearing.
Might I remind council that there was a move to try and get this on the ballot, and we ran out of time. So, the impetus from council was to put it on the ballot initially, but the deadline precluded that. So, we've been there of a mind, so I, I, I'm going to stick with that one.
Do you all want to go through the ordinance phase first, or have a meeting first?
We've got a motion on the table.
Restate the motion, please.
Ms. Lindblad made a motion to assign a number and read the ordinance. Mr. Raphael seconded.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Yeah. Roll call vote then.
I have a roll call, but I'll be happy to do it.
Mr. Weaver?
Roll call vote.
Actually, you don't-
On assigning a number?
Well, you don't have to, but at one of the council members' requests, it usually has been done that way.
All right, well, do a roll call vote now, since he requested it.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. Panal?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
No.
Four yeses, two nos. The ordinance number will be 2166.
Change, that's wrong. We discussed that last time, so 307 will be 407.
Thank you.
This is 407?
Whoops, that was the point.
Mr. Raphael observed that in the third whereas, the code section, the statute section needs to be 1443407.
Ms. Lindblad?
I'd like to make a motion that ordinance 2166 would be read on its first reading.
We just did that.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were just assigning. Sorry.
Ordinance number 2166, and ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, providing for the election of aldermen by ward, by vote of the qualified electors of the ward in which they each are a candidate with an emergency clause. Whereas, the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, or Arkansas, recognizes that this country was established on principles of a representative for-
Form.
-form of government, and, whereas, the city council of the city of Eureka Springs believes that a system whereby an alderman would be elected only by the votes of the electors of the ward from which the alderman is a candidate, would assure more equal representation by ward, and, whereas, Arkansas Code Annotated Section 1443407 provides that cities may, by ordinance, provide that all aldermen be elected by ward rather than at large, in which event, each alderman shall be voted upon by only the qualified electors of the ward from which he or she is a candidate. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section one, the future election of aldermen in the city of Eureka Springs shall be by ward, by vote only of the qualified electors of the ward in which they are each a candidate, and the names of candidates in the respective wards shall be placed only on the ballots in the ward in which the candidate is running for office. Section two, a copy of this ordinance shall be given to the Carroll County Board of Election Commissioners, so that future elections can be conducted in accordance with its provisions. Section three, the terms of incumbent aldermen shall not be affected hereby. Section four, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section five, all ordinances and solutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith, are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Could you give the reference again, Arkansas Code Annotated Section?
1443407.
That addresses deputy city attorneys, the original reference is 1443307B1A, I believe.
Excuse me, does that correspond?
You said it was changed to 1443407, correct?
Does 307 correspond?
307 says election of aldermen larger by ward. And we discussed that at 1443, I had made mention, or somebody had, because I changed it from 407 to 307B1 capital A, for the updated part of the reference.
Okay.
Okay, any further changes, corrections? Okay, Mr. Panal?
Was, was the title corrected? I'm sorry, I wa, I was looking up the reference, I did not hear if it was read the way the copy I have is, and says with an emergency clause.
It does say with an emergency clause.
Did you read it as an emergency clause?
Not until the end.
I think the question was, did you read the title?
The title?
Oh, yes.
Have you read it?
I did.
I, I request that we delete emergency clause in the title, because if you read the proposed emergency clause, it addresses the 2012 election, which I believe someone pointed to earlier, that, that's a little bit gone by the wayside at this point in time.
Mr. Weaver?
You're actually both looking at an older version of this. There's a newer version that did not have an emergency clause and did not reference emergency clause. I don't know why you don't have that document. There was one prepared several weeks after that one.
The same one I've had the whole time, I'm sorry.
So is this one ready? Not the emergency clause?
That one was prepared, the one you're looking at was prepared when there was still time for it to have been placed on the ballot, and still time before the candidates declared their candidacy.
Here's the two copies. This is the original, that's the second.
So.
Yes.
So for clarification, since I don't have the most current one, I'm assuming that the, the one that was read still says that the term, and I heard her say it, the terms of the incumbent aldermen shall not be affected hereby, that if this goes through the readings, the public hearing, and gets passed, chances are, maybe, we could, we could be looking at potentially this not even being, having any effect until two, two years from now, is that correct?
You cannot, at this point, affect the election that is underway.
Saying, so is it really need to be put in there? Is that-
It is in there, because you may not pass it immediately, as you don't sometimes do, and if it was to go past the election, it would not affect the incoming council members. The election is scheduled to only go another couple of weeks, not a couple of months.
So would that section be a little redundant, in that case?
It needs to be there for that purpose, prevent an argument that it should be, to negate the current election.
Okay. Ms. Lindblad?
Should this date be changed from 2012, or is that a right, that it says after 2012?
It should be as it's stated, after 2012, because it cannot affect the 2012 election.
Mr. DeVito?
I will restate that the attorney reinforced my position that this was an issue that we were going to put on the ballot, and now something has changed. I have it changed, I think it still needs to go before the public. So, that's the direction that council was on just a couple of months ago, and now suddenly we're here wanting to decide at this table, and I don't think that's fair to voters in the community.
Any further? Nothing else? Mr. Panal?
I, I don't remember any discussion about affecting this, this election, other than the fact that they're being put on the ballot. I could have seen, had, had we taken timely execution of this, could have potentially affected the voting, if, if all the voting rules and everything were, were met, but I, I think that the, I don't know if it was ever discussed that the intent was to put it on the ballot. Intent was to try to pass it before the, and I may be wrong, before the candidates that are running in the current election were, were affected.
I can assure Mr. Panal that the intent of this body was to have it on the ballot, and we, we, some of us lamented the fact that we had run out of time. You can review the tapes, I stand by my statement.
Any further?
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yep, it is. At a standstill now. There's only one motion.
There's no motion on the table at this time.
There was.
There is no motion on the table at this time.
Then why was Ms. Lindblad told that there was already a motion on the table when she made a motion to put it, assign a number and put it on its first reading?
I move to approve ordinance 2166 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yes, 4-2.
I move to suspend, suspend the rules and put ordinance 2166 on its second reading.
Mr. Weaver?
I think you need to clarify which one you're actually voting on, because what was read is not, was not the current version, and there should not be that emergency clause language in there.
I move to remove the emergency clause. I will retract my previous motion. I move to remove the emergency clause and the reference to the emergency clause in the title from ordinance 2166.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Barry?
What is the hurry here? I thought we were going to have a public hearing. All of a sudden, we're reading this one twice? I don't understand this, this sounds like something being buffaloed. It is being buffaloed through here.
Point of order, okay.
And I don't agree, I don't, this isn't right.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't recall that we ever voted on having a public hearing.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes, I don't think there's any hurry on this, I mean, it's going to mean nothing at this moment, and we should give the people as much time as they need to have some input on this.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Okay. There's a second, a second motion filed. I'd entertain a 10-minute recess.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This meeting will be back in session. We were at number seven under unfinished business. I believe that one can be removed, since we already have an ordinance and money taking care of the equipment.
That you wanted to give an update on voting that part?
He's still trying to get this equipment together, so. Okay, so most, you want to leave it on or take it off?
What?
Number seven. It's your item.
I'd like to hear a report on it.
It's, all right, motion to discuss.
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Miller's still in the process of getting the units together, as far as we know, and when he gathers, gathers the units, he'll come over here and he'll do the prelim work before the installation, is that my understanding? Okay. And that's where we're at, that's all we know right now. Yes, ma'am?
I had a citizen come in the other day and ask me what's going to happen to all the radiators and all the things, like the heating coils, because he said all of those were metal that could be used by the city to help finance the project if it's set up that the, I'm sorry, I don't-
You scrap.
-well tonight, but that, yeah, that the scrap is going to be taken by MCC, or if the city's going to be able to scrap that so that we can reimburse some money out of that, or-
We'll have to look in contracts, see if they, they retain, it doesn't? They take it on out? Okay. Do they maintain control over it? They take it away, okay. They take it and scrap it.
So that means they get the money from it then?
That's like the proposal that he faxed out? The proposal that he gave to y'all, or that we gave to y'all? It says that they take away everything, they take away all the boiler and stuff like that, has no discussion on selling or whatever in it.
Okay.
So that is the proposal, we could possibly ask him for that, but right now, as a signed contract, he takes away the stuff.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Butch?
Well, even if we decide to keep the equipment, we'd probably, our responsibility then to provide the dump and, and all this other things, and for the salvage and stuff, usually when people take the demolition, that's, it just didn't get rid of it. You're right, there's probably money involved, but I don't know how much money, you know, a couple of thousand dollars, but it may cost us 5,000 to get rid of it.
Mr. Panal, you had your hand up, sir.
I was, I was just concerned about a comment you made in regards to the contractor. I thought when we were in discussion on passing this with the emergency clause due to the upcoming cold weather, et cetera, that they were already going to start on the prelim work, they weren't going to wait until the units were in.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And he was, oh, you said he was going to order them when they came in, then he was going to come over and start doing the prelim work.
Okay, turn around.
Okay.
Okay, so if I understand Mr. Barry right, then he's saying that the time it would take for us to have city employees deal with that stuff, and, because there's a place right over in Berryville that recycles metals, that it wouldn't be worth the cost of having city employees deal with it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other thing is Diane gave me a really good timeline the other day, that it might be interesting if you gave us that timeline now, because I think that would answer Mr. Panal's question.
Okay, from my understanding, this is what he quoted me in the email, that it'll be three to four weeks for the equipment to come in, and then another week and a half to have it up and running. He said that he will start working, taking out the coil units and stuff like that before the equipment arrives, so he'll get it all set up and ready to go. Of course, we're going to have to-
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Blad?
Yes.
6-0.
So, for clarification, since I don't have the most current one, I'm assuming that the one that was read still says that the term, and I heard her say it, "The terms of the incumbent aldermen shall not be affected hereby." That if this goes through the readings, the public hearing, and gets passed, chances are maybe we could be looking at potentially this not even having any effect until two years from now. Is that correct?
You cannot, at this point, affect the election that is underway. No.
So, does it really need to be put in there?
It is in there, because you may not pass it immediately, as you don't sometimes do. And if it was to go past the election, it would not affect the incoming council members. The election is scheduled to only go out another couple of weeks, not a couple of months.
So, wouldn't that section be a little redundant in that case?
It needs to be there for that purpose, prevent an argument that it should be, to negate the current election.
Okay.
Should this date be changed from 2012? Or is that a right, that it says after 2012?
It should be as it's stated, after 2012.
Okay.
Because it cannot affect the 2012 election.
Mr. Weaver?
I will restate that the attorney reinforced my position that this was an issue that we were going to put on the ballot. And now something has changed. I have it changed. I think it still needs to go before the public. So, that's the direction that counsel was on just a couple of months ago, and now suddenly we're here wanting to decide at this table, and I don't think that's fair to voters in the community.
Any further? Nothing else? Mr. Poundal?
I don't remember any discussion about affecting this election, other than the fact that it being put on the ballot. I could have seen, had we taken timely execution of this, could have potentially affected the voting, if all the voting rules and everything were met. But I think that the, I don't know if it was ever discussed that the intent was to put it on the ballot. Intent was to try to pass it before the, and I may be wrong, before the candidates that are running in the current election were affected.
I can assure Mr. Poundal that the intent of this body was to have it on the ballot, and we, some of us lamented the fact that we had run out of time. You can review the tapes. I stand by my statement.
Any further?
Do we have a motion on the table?
Okay. That is, that is standing still now. There's only been one motion.
There is no motion on the table at this time.
There was.
There is no motion on the table at this time.
Then why was Ms. Lynn Blad told that there was already a motion on the table when she made a motion to assign a number and put it on its first reading?
Because we've already done that. I move to approve ordinance 2166 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the record, notice of veto, October 10, 2012, City Clerk Armstrong. I hereby veto Resolution 607 regarding the 2012 major fiscal budget review that was approved by City Council during the regular meeting on Monday, October 8, 2012. According to YCA 1443-504, Section 3, Subsection 2, Letter A and B, in case of veto, is before the next regular meeting of the council. The mayor shall file in the office of City Clerk to be laid before that meeting a written statement of his or her reasons for doing so. An ordinance in order, resolution apart thereof vetoed by the mayor is invalid unless, after the written statement is laid before it, the council, by two-thirds votes of all altered aldermen elected thereto, pass it over the veto. Reasons for the veto. Number one, regarding Resolution 607 general fund expenses from 01-00-5715, transfers out cemetery commissioning increase $8,350. The current city funds, or the city council's extraction, reallocation of prebudgeted funds from the affected departments, line items, travel, education dues is not warranted due to the fact that the Eureka Springs Cemetery Commission is currently in possession of three certificates of deposit CDs in a trust fund, and the Bank of Eureka Springs, also known as Cornerstone Bank, which now total $100,000. Number two, the current city council states that they have just recently been informed-